If anyone in the audience is reading, recording, or videotaping, they need to acknowledge such at this time. Other than Born TV, I do see Owen K. Thank you. Um, please refrain, well, we're not in the building. Flash photography does not apply. If anyone from the public wishes to access the meeting, they can do so by calling the following conference line. One nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine. Zoom meeting ID eight nine seven one two two nine three five three eight. Password, all caps, born. The Zoom chat will not be monitored. Participants who wish to speak must raise the hand icon until the chair asks them to unmute. All items within this meeting agenda are subject to deliberation and votes. And first, first on the item on the agenda was to report out from executive session. We really don't have much to report out. We just had discussion and there were no votes taken. So we will move on to public comment on non-agenda items. Public comments are allowed for a total of 12 minutes at the beginning of each meeting. Each speaker is limited to three minutes for comment. Board members are unable to respond due to the posting requirements of the open meeting law. And do we have anyone here who is present for public comment? Can raise your hand or speak now. All right, hearing none. We shall move on to item number three on tonight's agenda. A presentation by Cape and Islands Bridge Coalition. I'm not sure who's here for that.
Um, Madam Chair, I believe Greg is here for that. And I do have a slide presentation that I will share in, if you give me one moment.
Thank you so much. Hello, Greg. I see you there.
All right. Are you able to see the slides?
Looks great to me.
Okay, thank you.
Everyone else okay? Greg, you can see those fine?
Yeah, I have a copy here as well. Just, uh, thank you very much for your time. Uh, I'm a member of the Cape and Islands Bridge Coalition. Um, I thought Paul in his Wiki would be joining me, but it looks like I'm flying solo, so I apologize if I, uh, seem a little unpolished. I recognize how much Bourne has put into this project and I appreciate all everyone's support in seeing this major project through. So, uh, going through the slides, the, uh, Buenos Aires bridges provide the only roadway connection points between Cape Cod and the mainland. There are 15 towns plus Nantucket and the Vineyard. Two hundred and thirty year round residents, 10,000 businesses, 5 million visitors, visitors per year. $250 million annual state and local revenue. Um, we all know the bridges are nearly 90 years old, both Bourne and Sagamore are functionally obsolete, structurally deficient, and require increasingly frequent maintenance as they near the end of their serviceable lifespan. Uh, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers replace, recommends replacing the bridges. In April of 2020, in their report, after evaluating a number of alternatives, the Army Corps Assistant Secretary of Army Civil Works announced their recommendation to replace the current Sagamore bridges. Uh, there are a couple of scenarios shown here, um, for complete shutdown for uh, six months and 16 months of lane closures. Also, complete shutdowns for two to five years. And this would be a huge cost to the community and a huge detriment to, uh, Cape and the islands with, uh, costly delays, loss in tourist revenue, uh, lost short-term rental revenue, uh, loss of tax revenue. In either scenario, the numbers are staggering and it would really be, um, a, a, a real loss to our, our community. The, uh, Cape and Islands Bridge Coalition was formed in 2024 under the leadership of the Cape Cod Chamber in response to the business and community concerns. Uh, the CIBC aims to ensure the Sagamore and Bourne bridges are replaced in a timely, fiscally responsible manner while minimizing, minimizing the adverse effects of the 200, uh, 230,000 year round residents in the Cape, plus the 8,000 businesses. Compromise of representatives from 50 major employers, civic groups, professionals, organizations across the Cape, the islands, South Shore and Greater Boston. These meetings meet almost monthly, the, uh, with a core group meeting quarterly. Uh, the model is based on a better city project in their work around the central artery. You know, get gathering people together in higher numbers is really an important way for us to show solidarity around the project. Uh, the funding for the construction timeline for both bridges must be, must be prioritized by the Commonwealth and the, and the, uh, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and all options must be considered. A mitigation plan must be developed for both bridges to minimize disruption. I might just suggest that police, fire, and other, uh, municipal services also to be included in that. Public must, uh, engage in, must be engaged and be informed in the mitigation of bridge construction impacts. Maintaining open communication with the construction, the Commonwealth, and U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Uh, plans must be, uh, must protect and enhance what already exists and demonstrate respect and past traditions for the Cape and the islands. There's a list of the companies and groups that are participating. Um, the, the CIBC has met with, uh, state and federal lawmakers. There's been trips to Boston and DC to, uh, to secure funding and to rally support. Number of letters of testimony by the members. Uh, we're actively looking to expand the people that participate. Um, and, uh, the opinion poll, uh, is really a, a major statement in how people, if you just go to the next slide, I think it's the next two slides. There's an opinion poll that talked about 80% of the residents on Cape Cod and Nantucket and Martha's Vineyard, uh, favoring the replacement of the bridges, which is a huge number. It's just such a strong statement of how important these bridges are to our community. And, um, you know, there's a huge public support for, for the project. Um, the bridge public opinion poll again, well, the two-thirds of the response said replacing the bridge should be a top priority for state, regional, and national leaders. And for more information, you can contact the, uh, Cape Cod Bridges Program, fixcapedodbridges.com. Uh, so sorry to run so fast through, through all that, but it, and a lot of it's a probably repeat because I think you guys talk to Bourne's constantly in front of these folks, uh, with all the infrastructure needs of your town, so. I appreciate your time. If there are any questions, I'm sure other people are better than me, but I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Greg. Um, I guess I'll go around and ask the select board if anyone has any questions or comments for Greg this evening. Um, anyone in the public have any comments, questions? All right, all right. I guess hearing none, Greg, I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Greatful. Thank you so much.
Pretty.
Good evening.
Pretty.
Okay, moving on. Uh, so next on our agenda, item four is to discuss and vote final narrative decisions for social equity marijuana. Post-community agreement, HCA. Uh, the first, so I guess we'll start there and, um, I, I I see a draft in our, um, in our file. And I don't know where we should start here. Do I go, you want to go around to the select board members? And, um, any comments, questions, uh, further discussion on or debate on this? Is what we can do. Does anybody have any questions or comments from the select board? Or in relation to this draft, um, and what it's, you know, what stated, go ahead, Anne Marie, I see your hand first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so, one of the concerns I have that pops out is under NML Inc. And the, uh, reason for not advancing an HGA with them is the social equity applicant was not a prominent member of the management team. Um, uh, I, I guess that reason concerns me. I'm not, I'm, I'm not sure. It's been a while since we've, um, set these, uh, reasons. So in reviewing all of them and going through notes, I just, that one in particular popped out. So I'm not sure if, um, if there's any additional, like, explanation, if that's the actual verbiage. I'm trying to understand that one, since all the applicants were social equity applicants. I, I, I guess, why was that signal out for NLM? I don't, I don't understand the prominent member piece of that.
Okay.
I have, I, I have a concern with that one. In, in agreeing that that's a reason they should not have been selected.
Okay, thank you, Anne Marie. Uh, MJ, I see your hand.
Yeah, I actually, um, I, I had a um, different comment, but in, in response to Anne Marie's question, I, I think that was, um, part of my evaluation and part of my comments. Um, I think during the evaluation process, um, the social equity applicant for them was not, um, a major presenter of the business plan and the role of the social equity applicant was not, uh, clearly defined in the presentation. So I think that really, I, I would say that that comes from some of the comments that I made in my evaluation, so. Doesn't necessarily have to be in there, but it was a comment that came from the evaluations and the discussion.
Okay. And then was that your comment as well?
Um, I, I actually was gonna say, I thought that the, um, that the comments that were put in our packet, uh, reflected the discussion that the board had on the evaluations that were made and that they were, I actually thought they were pretty reflective of the comments that had been made.
Okay. All right, uh, Peter or, um, Gene, Gene, any comments or thoughts on all of this, this draft that we have before us?
I, I thought the comments were pretty accurate. I do remember that discussion about the prominent, um, member of the management team. Yeah, I, I can see why there'd be some concern about that, just because it's a one thing that kind of. I don't know. I guess I had the same uncomfortable, um, I'm just as uncomfortable about including that in there. There's, there's quite a list of comments under NLM Inc. as it is, so.
Okay, Peter?
I concur to everything everybody's saying at this time. I have nothing more to add.
Okay, so, um, the Chair, I'll now speak. So I just want to say, first of all, you know, I respect, deeply respect all of these applicants and I personally wish we could have given a license to everyone in this list, but, um, uh, entered into a post-community agreement with all of these candidates, right? But we couldn't, um, so.
We just talked, but.
Oh, we might have to mute. Um, so, you know, I'm not sure, I, I, I'm not comfortable with that comment either. Um, I think social equity candidate, if they're a social equity candidate, then that's why they're here. And I also don't really agree with a lot of the other comments for NLM as well. I mean, there, I felt that their presentation was great and everything was there, so. I don't know, I'm, I'm just, I, I think it's, the, the comments feel a bit harsh to me. I think that their plan was excellent and they were one of my choices, we knew. Um, so, that's my concern again. I, I'm not sure I like that, that one comment and I don't know, some of the other ones don't really thrill me either. I don't think the, the location is difficult to access. I lived on Everett Road for, I live, still have a home on Everett Road for 20 years. And that's a good location, okay? So that's my opinion. So I don't know where we go from there. Um, this is a draft, so I'm not sure if we can, you know, remove some of this or if we feel we need to, or what is the board's pleasure here on this next steps? Marlene, any suggestions?
Um, so it is a draft and I did draft this up immediately after your September 11th discussion while it was off, while it was still fresh. Um, however, it, the board is here again tonight discussing it, so if anyone wants to make a motion to change this draft in any way, you certainly have the ability to do that.
Okay. Any thoughts, the select board, any? Anyone feel?
If I could add?
Yes, please, Dean, go ahead.
Under L, NLM, the location, I think the location for me, um, wasn't necessarily the difficulty to access, it was being adjacent to the residential neighborhood.
Okay, so maybe we should reword that, that should be changed because I, I don't feel it's difficult to access. I think that's right at the rotary. It's in and out, there's already plenty of businesses there, and as I said, 20 years on Everett, 20, still there on Everett, um. So I don't know, we can probably, I would love to see that maybe changed or reworded as well, maybe to reflect Gene's comment. Because I think you were the one that actually spoke on that.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I'm not sure if did not present and did not demonstrate is proper wording either. Maybe it should say something like, um, you know, as opposed to the other candidates, it was not as strong of a plan for diversion or prevention, as opposed to the stronger candidate instead of did not. Because I don't think, I think did not is saying they didn't do it at all. And it, they were, those things were there and maybe some felt they weren't as strong as some of the other folks in the room, but I'm just not sure if I like the did not. Because that's really not, I don't know. So that's my thoughts there. Peter, any thoughts from you? MJ? Anne Marie?
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm, 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 they were my top choice, so I don't agree with any of the reasons why we're not.
I don't think any of it was weak either, right? I'm sure.
I, I, yeah, I agree. I, you know, they did present, they did, they, they made a, not have embellished as much in the oral presentation, but the information in the binders was definitely there. So, but again, I, you know, I, I disagree, yes, because they were my, they were my top choice, so I, I can't say that I agree with really the reasons why we didn't, we declined to advance them with the HCA.
Okay, so.
And it does, you know, I mean, per regulations, the only reason, I mean, residence isn't a reason not to be, um, having something in close proximity, uh, there were, there were, you know, zoning wise, it was, there were some regulations within schools and children and et cetera, but not, not within, um, residential communities.
Or maybe that when we were choosing the overlays, we did a really, um, careful job along, um, MacArthur Boulevard to not include any property that in any way of accessing residential neighborhood. And the people that lived within Buzzard Bay that were objecting to the overlay district did, um, bring that up as an objection, so. Um, like the, for example, the commercial property that's adjacent, you know, off MacArthur Boulevard, you can access through Commerce Park. That was all eliminated because it was close to the neighborhoods, so. This is a little closer, in my opinion. I just, uh, that was just my opinion.
Thank you, Gene. MJ, go ahead.
Um, so what, what, uh, what it says in the document is there were under one presentation that said there was a strong presentation for something. And then under NLM, it said it was, did not present a strong, did not make a strong presentation. So they may have presented it, they may have given the information, but in the majority of the board's view, it was not as strong, so. If you want to say, if you want to change it to that it did not present to presentation on this was not as strong, that would be reasonable, but I think, um, I, I think that was the differentiation. That there were, there was a strong presentation and then there was a presentation that was not as strong. So. And the view of some select board members. So it did not present as strong a plan for diversion, did not demonstrate as strong a plan for. You could make it say that, which would seem to be what you're saying, that although they did have a plan, it was not as strong in the judgment of some select board members as in other presentations.
Sure. And then weak proposal for consumer education. I'm not sure weak is the word. I mean, it was present, right? So, um, yeah, a lot of that I'm not happy, I'm not thrilled with, so. Okay, so what do we have to do? Do we need to make a motion here? Have someone make a motion to sort of adjust some of these comments? To, to reflect, uh, a little bit more respectful of the applicant's qualifications?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Peter.
Do we want to treat this like a first draft, second draft, final draft, like we do similar policies to make?
That's a good question, Peter. Marlene, do you suggest we do that and do more than one reading? Or would you like us to finalize these decisions this evening? If we're gonna, if we're going to go to A, then I think we might need to, correct?
Um, so that's completely up to the board. When you're ready to vote, i- it's not policy. I, I do want to be clear that this is not a policy decision, discussion, so you are not having readings and you, you're not opening this up to public feedback or public comments. This is a board, a board decision about essentially a licensing discussion, um. But I also, um, don't, I don't want to, I don't want you to think that I'm pressuring you that you have to do it today, but it, I would not treat this as policy and I would not suggest that these are readings.
Okay, thank you for that. And then, so, um, go ahead. I see Brian's hand is up. I would like to have him.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, first off, reiterate what the town administrator said. This is a licensing decision, not a policy decision, so. Um, at some point, you know, we're not going to. Um, at some point, you, you know, we're not gonna reopen this to the public and we do wanna reach an endpoint. It is important, however, that, you know, whatever is written as your reasons for making a decision uh is clear and reflects, you know, the consensus of the board, so I think it's fine. Um, if this needs to, you know, this was a, a first draft and this is, you know, sort of one of, you know, the open meeting law is great insofar as it promotes transparency, but in terms of drafting a decision, it's sometimes not the most efficient model either, and it means it just takes us some time, and that's fine. Um, so I, I, I would suggest that um, we got some guidance tonight. Um, you know, I think it would also be permissible if select board members individually had thoughts about what they wanted to edit, to send those solely to staff and not amongst each other, because we don't wanna violate the open meeting law. Um, and then, you know, that would, those kind of comments would give staff um, a good sense of what may need to be edited. Um. Now that said, we may not be able to circulate those comments ahead of time for the next meeting in the packet, we may have to sort of reveal them during the open meeting. But I'm just trying to think of the most efficient way to sort of not have this become several rounds of, you know, we all meet to talk and then we have changes and we don't feel like we can knock them out in one night. So, I, I mean, to summarize, I think it's fine to take another night, but I would suggest that, you know, if, if we're gonna do that, we had some general comments here. Um, if anyone has any other comments, again, it, it would be appropriate to individually and not to the board, send those along to staff so that hopefully whatever version we work on at the last, the next sort of meeting date would be the final one and we wouldn't be stretching this process out anymore.
Okay. And so without this narrative voted on this evening, are we able to move forward with A? That's my question now. Or do we, will it be, we would add that? Um, go ahead. Go ahead, Marlene first, I see MJ's hand is up again.
So, um, obviously, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I do, I would not recommend you authorize any signatures until the board has voted your narrative decisions, so.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that, you, you don't know. I mean, look, until you've fully and finally settled, settled on the reasons for why you're doing it, it's probably a good idea to not make it final, final. I'm not suggesting you need to change any minds or anything like that, but I'm, it's also within the realm of possibility that the act of getting to the reasons may make someone reconsider something, so.
Just, MJ, go right ahead.
So, I'm a little bit concerned about a process where individual people send a bunch of edits to us, to staff, and then the staff decides what edits are gonna be made without having the deliberation on what the consensus of the board is. I think I, um. I understand that the and, and I think that, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's only concerns about the comments under N L, N L M. Are we agreed on all the comments of the other people? Is that, is that a consensus that, except with the exception of the N L, N L M comments that the board is in concurrence with the document?
I'll go around and let the select board answer that, and then I'll go to myself last, of course. So, Anne Marie and Jean, Peter, your thoughts?
I'm fine with the other comments.
Yeah, I, I mean, I concur with, with, with the, the other comments and the reasons, um. Again, you know, I take issue with because they were my choice. So naturally, I take issue with, right? But, um. Again, this was the consensus at that point on how this draft was formulated from the previous meeting with the three individuals. Um. Uh, commit, board members that didn't choose them as their top choice.
So do we think we can agree this evening to edit the, the ones in M L M that we want? Or do we want to take some time to one more meeting to take a look at it and have everybody uh be confident that they're comfortable and able to verbalize it and then have another meeting to, um, work on the authorization? Jean, your thoughts? Peter?
Yeah, with, with the, um, if it was, if it was just a couple of statements, it would be easy to draft something tonight and make a motion, um. Maybe another meeting would be better, just to make sure we really nail it down. But yeah, I agree with MJ, it's gonna be hard to uh come to a consensus without deliberation, so we're just gonna have to do our best to, um, discuss what we need to tonight, so Marlene has a clear idea of, of what we feel.
I agree with, um, with Jean and what MJ said.
Okay. So, what's the pleasure here? MJ, your hand's still up, or is that a?
No, it's, it's a new hand, because the, the question I had was, you know, can we just focus on the N L M comments? So, if we could just focus on the N L M comments, and from what I've heard, is that the language uh, if, if, if we were to say, uh, for the first bullet, did not present as strong a plan for diversion and prevention, and for the second bullet, did not demonstrate as strong a plan for local involvement. Um. And, uh, the.
And remove did not present a diverse hiring as well, that did not.
And, and did not present as, as strong a diverse hiring plan. I mean, I think it's, I think, I think the issue is it's comparative. It, it, all of these were, uh, in, uh, in all these situations, it was comparative. That people on the board looked at the applicants and compared the applicants and made decisions that for the majority of the board, that their plan was not as strong and that their, and, um. If, if the board wants to remove the bu, the fourth bullet, social equity applicant was not a prominent member of the management team, I, that, that's fine. I, I think that they did not take as strong a lead in the presentation to the board as some of the other social equity applicants, but uh, uh, that's fine, um. Uh, I think it is true that the app, application was presented to the select board by the attorney and not the management team. Um. The location, there were concerns about the location being difficult to access. Some people might think it's not difficult, yeah, but there were concerns.
That wasn't what Jean had said. She had said that she was, it wasn't difficult to access, she had noted that it was close in, close proximity to a residential neighborhood.
So what could we, what could we edit that to say?
Right.
I, I prefer to like have the deliberation and come back with, this is what we've got a consensus on, so we, we don't continue to kick the can down the road, um.
Okay, so I like that, so it's not difficult to access, so the location.
There were concerns about the location, is basically what it was.
Right, that's what I was just saying, that was concerns about the locations access. I mean, the location, correct. Um, I would like to see the fourth bullet removed completely, and I don't like weak proposal for consumer education, I don't think that's fair. It was there, um, I'm not sure weak is the word, so I don't know how we could edit that to feel a little bit. Uh, again, maybe it's, um, proposal for consumer education not as strong or.
That, that's fine, yeah.
Um, number four is leaving. The applicant was presented by the attorney and not the management team. Okay.
We did hear from
Right.
several people, even the consultant, um, in that particular case, but again, I mean, you know, the, the presentation wasn't the sole basis of the reasons why or why not we are, you know, given the score they were given either.
Maybe we should remove that one as well. Or reword it, because they did present some point during the presentation. So, um, the application, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't seem to me that it needs to be there if they did, they, they did present.
Well, I think the difference, if I may, the difference was that the, the attorney was the lead presenter. The attorney took the lead, and I think that made a difference. I mean, what we're talking about is in the people that were evaluating the proposal, what made a difference? I think that made a difference. I think that there were some, that, there were some applicants where you, the presenter was the lead social equity person and you got a sense of their, you got a sense of their what they were doing and what they believed in, and I, I, I think that makes a difference. I think it made a difference before, so I I mean, if you wanna, whatever you're gonna do, I, I, uh, but I do think that having your attorney be the lead presenter, even though you know, when we look at alcohol licenses, do you know, a lot of times it's the attorney that makes the presentation, and you're looking at zoning proposals or things before the planning board, a lot of times they make, the attorney does it. I think this, I think in this case it's a little bit different, but if you wanna, if you wanna take that out, that's fine.
I think a lot of our, like liquor applicants, the attorney speak is, I mean, I think most of them, I, so far, I've had the attorney has spoken, so I agree on that, that's a good point. So yeah, I mean, I'm just not comfortable with that, I just, I'm sorry.
So if we take out, uh, that's the fourth and the fifth bullets, right?
Fourth and sixth.
There were, there were some locations about the, uh, 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 there were some concerns about the location. And, um.
Exactly, the fifth and the sixth.
Yeah. A fourth and fifth, one, two.
Fourth and fifth, sorry. Can't count, I can't count today, I guess.
Yeah, there's, yeah. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, so that satisfies me, I guess. On that, then, so. All right. So do we have to make a motion to, um, have those, make those changes? Is there any other? Just while we're here, is there any other, um, applicants that we feel need to be changed now that we've been talking a little bit? Um, I mean, you know, maybe Medicine Man, to be honest, it says the location is difficult to access. I mean, there are businesses up there. It's not difficult, I get, I, I don't feel like I go up there, pet smart, there's, you know. I guess it's just, it's, um, it's certainly a challenge coming in and out of there, right? Um, so I don't know, I don't wanna get too far in the weeds, I guess that, that is sort of a tough location. I think we all agree that access was.
I'm sorry, um, it's just any, any of these properties, uh, well, especially Buzzards Bay with the rotary and the impacts, especially, you know, some of will create, create challenges. Um, but, um, but definitely, but we don't have to be so strong, it's just that we, cuz we don't dispute the fact that certain times of the year is worse than others to get in these locations.
I mean, we could say that on the others on MacArthur, cuz they are only one side, you have to go out and around to come back to it, you know, what if you forgot your purse? I mean, right, I'm just saying, there's a lot of reasons where we could say that some of them or all of them are difficult to access in one way or another, in my opinion, so. Yeah, so there's that. Okay, so what's our, um, what's our next step here? So did you, so Marlene got those notes, the, those changes?
Um, Madam Chair, I, I did, I did take notes, so why don't I make some adjustments based on your conversation? And then this can be rescheduled at a future meeting, um, when I have a chance to make the, um, revisions.
Okay, perfect, we appreciate that, thank you. I just think we wanna be, you know, we wanna be equitable, and again, I respect each and every one of these candidates extremely. And, um, it's been a hard, it's been a hard road. I, I mean, I'm not sure I, I, you know, completely agree with the scoring, um, and several other reasons, but let's move on and, uh, let's get that done and we'll schedule this for another time. Do we need a motion to do so? No, would this keep going? Okay. Alrighty then, I feel like we've made a little progress and we'll get this done fairly and this narrative written so that we can make this decision and, um, decide on this, uh, social equity host community agreement. Any further discussion from the board before we move on to the next agenda item?
Jean? There we go, I just have one last comment. I, I, I do, I can understand, um, I do agree with MJ's comments about the lawyers doing, the lawyer doing a presentation, but, um, I do think those two statements are yeah, the wording is, is off, and that definitely needs to be cleaned up for those two. It's kinda like they're both trying to say the same thing in a different way or something, so. I think that's okay. I, and maybe the location for Medicine Man is a challenge or something versus difficult tasks, but it's just semantics. But we did argue that it was difficult compared to the other ones, so I think that's legit.
Yeah, it's certainly a challenge in and out, but it's, you know, not impossible, cuz there's businesses there, we know, so.
Oh, yeah.
All right, maybe Marlene make that note for the Medicine Man, just so, okay. All right, thank you for that.
We could use the same wording, that, the location, there were concerns about the location, and just leave it at that. I mean, that, that's what we said for, um, N L M, there were concerns about the location, and you could say the same thing about Medicine Man, there were concerns about the location.
I could say that, well, okay, all right. Excellent, thank you. Seven forty-five, okay, so, uh, moving on, we have, uh, number five on our agenda is a public hearing. Um, and it's layout for Pecassett Woods petition, four point five and four point six of the public road layout and acceptance policy. I know Mr. Tim Lydon is here to discuss this with us.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Tim Lydon of the Town Engineering Department, accompanied by Matt Swicki, D B W Director. Um, we are at the point where we have received a petition with the appropriate signatures. We have the appropriate content of all of the taking material for us with the legal documents and, uh, road construction information. We came before you in August or maybe September to have the preliminary vote. We moved that to the planning board, the planning board did not have um, any discussion, it was unanimous, um, to approve and for consideration for, for acceptance. Um. We are now, uh, beyond that, we are, we've notified the abutters of the taking. The estimated betterment number at this time is six hundred and twenty thousand dollars, that is a not to exceed number. Um, this is going to be, uh, a portion to frontages owned by the residents of Pecassett Woods. Um, and we are looking for action today uh, by your board uh, based on the meets and bounds plan. So with that being said, um, I'll take any questions and comments.
Thank you, Tim. Um, oh, I see Suzy Perry's hand is up, go ahead, Suzy.
Hi, can you hear, good, can you hear me?
I can.
You, you, I'm sorry, you can?
Yep.
Okay, good. So, um, I went over to town, um, to the community center thinking that the meeting was over there and um, raced home when I realized it was virtual, and unfortunately, a lot, well, I would say probably about five households um, who wanted to speak showed up as well. So, um, so the, I wanted to first of all make that notation because, um, in the assessment letter, it does say, it doesn't say virtually, it says show up at, you know, the community center, um, and unfortunately, we do have some folks that are a little bit older and, you know, they don't have, um, the ability to do that, and I actually didn't realize that, and I went over to and showed up a person, but at any rate, um, I'm, I am wondering if we should, um, not to slow anything down in terms of any kind of vote for today, but I do wonder if, given that, should we, um, open up a, have another, um, be on the agenda for another meeting in order to give people the opportunity, because I think some people did have some things they wanted to say, and I don't know how you guys wanna handle that.
Thank you, Suzy, apologies for that. I know sometimes these virtual meetings get, um, sort of sidelined and then people aren't aware, they're not able to check the website or online. Slidelined and then people aren't aware if they're not able to check the website or online, so um. I don't guess that. I'm not opposed to. Having another meeting. I guess I'll ask the town administrator or what she feels on that.
Yes, um, I did not realize that the hearing notice had the physical location as part of the notice, so we should. Reschedule this hearing.
Great. I think that would be wise. Um, I don't anticipate that it will change the course of anything. But I do think it's only fair that we give some folks the opportunity to. Say what they have to say, or you know, just ask for some clarification or ask a few questions.
I agree, Suzie, and thank you for that. Um, we apologize for that, overlooking that on the notice.
No, that's okay.
I offer my apologies as well. Sorry about that, Suzie.
That's okay. No, I, I normally am really good at checking those things, but um, I just, it got by me, so, yeah.
Hey, alright, well then we will, thank you, Tim, for that and uh, so we will schedule this for another time so that we can hear from the residents. Thank you, Suzie, for that. Oh, MJ, has your hand, MJ, go ahead.
Um, thanks. Um, could we, like, when there's a public hearing, have the public hearing notice and. The public hearing procedures included in the packet, so the select board, the whole select board is aware of. The public hearing note uh, posting and uh. Procedures that we're going to be following. I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Suzie, your hand up again?
Yes, sorry, one more thing, and then I do request that when we are rescheduled, that it be for a meeting that is in person. Again, we have several people in our neighborhood that are just not, they're, they just, they don't have computers, they can't do virtual. And I think that that would be helpful. Thank you.
Understood. I want, we should all go back to that, right?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Tim. Oh, I'm sorry, Peter, go ahead, yes.
Do you want a motion to continue this or reschedule this to an appropriate time for hybrid? Or just do it administrative without a motion?
Yeah, please do not make any motions. We will have to check the dates.
Thank you. Alright, we will talk about this at a future meeting. Okay, moving on. Um, number six is a presentation by the Health Director. And updates on the use opioid settlement funds for the mini grant program and outreach coordinator. I'm not sure who the U I C O think they go.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, yeah, I wanted to give you guys an update. Um, we're going on just about a year since the Select Board's mini grant program launched. And over the last year, we've uh, funded nine mini grants totaling about forty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars out of the fifty thousand that you guys separated out. Um, these have been awarded to local organizations, including Parents Supporting Parents, Cape Cod Children's Place, Kind Hearts for Kids. Born Sisters Free Coalition, Next Chance Inc., To the Moon and Back, Hopeful Outreach of Cape Cod, Housing Assistance Corp. And Duffy Health Center. Um, they've supported a range of efforts from sober living scholarships to family supports for. Parents and infants affected by NAS, to prevention education in our schools. Recovery housing, the lockstone box installations and outreach to the Duffy's uh, Reach Mobile Unit. Um, we still have uh, project completion dates are still forthcoming for most of these projects, so. We'll have a clearer picture of the total number of residents have been um, impacted by what we've done here. Uh, but so far, what I've seen reported and uh. For reimbursement, um, definitely a lot of people have been um, benefited from connections to services and education and a lot of compassion through these efforts. So it's been a great, had a great impact so far. Um, also, I wanted to let you guys know that through the. Comprehensive plan that we completed this summer with Advocates for Human Potential, um, they did. Budget accordingly to continue these mini grant programs um, with the select board, if that's something you guys wanted to do. Um, I would recommend if we move forward into year two that we uh, amend the application process to include a defined application period each year. Versus on um, like a rolling basis, uh, this would allow us for more structured and equitable review process versus a first come, first serve uh. Distribution, um, and uh, could be. Better uh, going forward in the long run, people will know that this is when we have applications every year going forward. Um, so people who come back for second year funding, um, know exactly when that's coming, which would be great. Uh, any questions on that?
Yeah, thank you so much, Caitlin. Um, Select Board, Anne Marie, MJ, anyone?
Yeah, I'm thrilled. I'm thrilled that the mini grant program is going to happen. It's, it's great to hear. I know several of these organizations and. The well-needed funding, um, and the direct impact, especially on our, on our born residents. It, it just meets immediately, right? And they've done, they've, they've done so much already and they know where the needs are. So it's great that, you know, they have that opportunity to sort of have a little mini pot of resources that they can um, support our, our. Our born residents with, who are in most need, so um, kudos to uh. You know, what Caitlin, what you've done and, and then just setting up, you know, the, the bigger picture. And a direction for the, the use of the remaining funds, um. I'm looking forward to hearing from the um. Steven Burdos, is that his name?
Yes, mhm.
Yeah, and I, you, you haven't spoken to that yet, but um, you know, bringing him on board and to, to bring that whole plan. Comprehensive plan to fruition is, is going to be a great asset to the town. And, and the great use of the money as well.
He was, we, I um, he came in for his first day yesterday and we sat down and talked about um, couple first steps that we're going to be doing. Uh, but he was a huge role in um, North Alborough's mini grant program as well and talked about how great it is to just get the funds out there so quickly. Versus, you know, funding bigger projects long term, you kind of see that impact, you know that the people that need the funds are getting it. To do the work that they're already doing, which is incredible. Um. But yeah, we're excited to have him, um, and I will hopefully get him before you guys sometime soon to uh, introduce himself and what he's going to be doing with us, so.
Hey, anyone else? Oh, MJ, go ahead, please.
Um, thanks. Um, so I think this is really great and I, I think the idea here was that we were. In the long term, planning for the big money and that we wanted to get some stuff going and I think that happened and I think that's really tremendous. I think my question is. Um, is, is the mini grant program something that. The group that's doing the funding, that's in charge of the funding can just say, we're going to do a mini grant program and this is how we're going to do it? As opposed to the select board saying set aside so much money? I mean, can that just be done within the process? As part of what, of what you're doing, or is there anything the select board needs to do?
Yeah, the, the comprehensive plan outlined a certain amount to allocate annually for the mini grants. Um, it is a grant program that was started by the select board, so I would just, if we're going to do any changes, it would be something that you guys would probably want to be involved in.
Yeah, and I agree, having a, a set period of time for uh, enrollment for the mini grants would better serve. You know, um, the constituents, I think. Knowing that this is our window and, you know, having a period of time where that grant's going to be awarded, they know that. You know, the end date and can plan accordingly, right? Um, with their individual programs. But I, you know, like you, MJ, I, yeah, I don't see the need anymore, um, that. You know, I, I trust, I mean, I've, I've sat in on a few of the meetings through the process where we had the consultant layout. Um, the uh, comprehensive plan for the opioid money. And I'm, I'm confident that that plan can certainly handle you, um, that, that mini grant process.
Thank you. Gene, Peter, any thoughts? Yeah, I mean, I just, I, you know, I, I don't want to reiterate all of what was said, but I, I think it's amazing the work you're doing and, you know, these applicants. That the recipients here, you know, I too know a lot of these groups and they really do some amazing work for the community and, you know, outside of our community as well. So um, this is great. I really appreciate the update on this. Thank you, Caitlin.
Absolutely, thank you.
Alright. Anyone else? No. Alright, do we have more to talk about or um, is that, is that the presentation for you? I know that we.
That's it from me today, yeah.
Alright, just making sure. Thanks so much for coming. Alright, moving on. So next, number seven, uh, we, is to authorize the town administrator to execute the succession. Successor ash and waste disposal agreement with re-world CMAS.
Thank you. So Dan Barrett, um, I'll turn this over to Dan in a second, but Dan and Asa have been. Working diligently to make sure that we are getting the best deal possible from Covanta for um. The ash that I swim receives and um. This is, this four-year agreement is. Clearly taking in um, into account that I swim will be taking on more debt for their. Um, building projects and although we can't really contract beyond those four years right now. That is what um, we're laying the groundwork for is to make sure that we have plenty of revenue to, to meet. Those um, debt payments along with all of the other expenses, obviously. And Dan will talk, get into the details with you, but one of the things that we're much more. We were pushing hard for this time around and are much more strict with is um, making sure that the town is made whole. For leachate disposal costs and that the town of Bourne is not. Um, subsidizing those costs going forward. So um, with that, I'll turn it over to Dan to get into the gory details.
Thank you, thank you, Dan.
There we go. Um, thank you very much, Madam Chair, uh, board members. Thanks for hearing us tonight. Um, as always, it's a, it's a thirteen, fourteen-year agreement. A lot of what we did was cleaning up the language, things that didn't belong there anymore, weren't relevant. Um, I think our main focus was to direct back to what the original um. Contract was to do. We wanted to focus on ash disposal, um, back away from MSW a little bit. And we were able to accomplish that. Um, as Marlene had mentioned, um, our pricing was uh. Elevated, we were a little bit lagging behind on the pricing. We brought that back up or were able to bring that back up um. To a competitive rate. Another thing that we did was. In trying to reduce the amount of MSW we took from CMAS, try to discourage them a little bit. There was no uh, mal-intent there. They just, they're, they're a rolling operation and once they get rolling, it's very difficult to uh. To slow them down. Things happen fast over there, as I'm sure you can imagine. So what we were able to do was um, we. A lot, or they allowed us, we discussed, um, we will give them six thousand tons a year at a certain price for MSW for garbage. Um, that is to accommodate their, their planned outages. Um, anything beyond that six thousand, it takes a, a ten percent jump to accept MSW. So they're well aware of that and looking forward to uh, slowing that process down a little bit. Um, a few other. Things as Marlene had um. Related to you guys. One of the things that always concerns us is our ability to get rid of leachate, um, to handle it, to uh, uh, afford it. We've done very well with the barge uh, project. We're very much um, involved with that and continue to be. They. Realize that it's an extended cost to us, to the town, and we've borne that for three or four years now and they're well aware of it. Um, and one of the things that they came back with was, you know. The adjustment of the pricing covers a lot of that. Also, um, they offered to, or we proposed to them that they uh, pay us an additional price if we should happen to lose one of our. Uh, current locations because of the quality of the leachate, which is impacted by their ash. So um, you know, we were able to make a deal with them. They'll give us so much per month to cover any of that. And uh, not to exceed two uh, two million over the length of the agreement, which is four years. So we were very happy about that. Um. It's worth mentioning that they're very happy to have us. They like having the town of Bourne. Um, and it was a long process, though. Whenever you get into these type of things, I, I think it probably took. Better part of eight, nine months to, to get it done. It's a clean new agreement. It's good for four years. Um, if it works out that in four years, we can keep going with them, we have another document to work with, so it should be a little bit shorter. Um. With that, I'll let it go if there's any questions.
Thank you, Dan. Um, any questions from the select board on this? Okay, is he some hands? Anne Marie, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Um. I won't pretend to comprehend most of the language and what's happening in this contract, but I appreciate Dan and Asa and the experts in the field, um. Uh, drafting it and, and working through um, disagreement. So um, that's the only comment I wanted to make. I wanted to say thank you to Dan and Asa and the team.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
MJ?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I appreciate the work that went into this agreement. I, I was just, um, can you just explain why it is that we're limiting disagreement to four years? Because our prior agreement with them was, I, I want to say a fifteen-year contract, so. What, what is, uh, why are we limiting it to the four years and what? That's.
Legally, we can only sell what we have permitted. And when I say permitted, the five point two million cubic yards that we just picked up is site assigned. But as you know, um, each one of the additional permits or liner sections that we build requires a permitting process. Authorization to construct and an authorization to operate. The authorization to operate is the key. Right now, we only have four years of capacity left in phase nine. Um, so, you know, hence, there's a lot of reasons, but that's one of the reasons why we're moving forward with the building as quickly as we can. It's, it's landfill uh, geometry. We just have to keep moving as fast as we can to keep ahead of the trash. So that's why. Um, and so we, we limit it to that. When we move on to phase seven, we get that permitted, then we'll, we'll talk some more. We'll, we'll talk with CMAS prior to that and see what their dealings are.
Great, thank you for the explanation. I appreciate it.
No problem.
Thank you, Dan. Peter, go ahead.
Uh, yes, uh, what is, um, has the Board of Health been discussing this? Cause I know that it wants to issue the site assignment and they manage this as well, so. I'm just here with the Board of House point of view and. Again, like, uh, what everybody else has said, you know, you, you and your team do a great job over there and I swim is our crown jewel. In more ways than one, so anything you ask for, we usually approve without question because we have the full faith of you and your staff.
Well, and, and you know, while you bring that up, Peter, as I was explaining to one of the auditors today, I said Bourne's a very unique town. And I've said this a hundred times, you guys have heard it, but. The size of the town of Bourne to run an asset the size of this one. And have as many, as many knowledgeable people to help us when we ask a question and ask for something is amazing for us, so. It's, it's very much appreciated the way you guys treat us and the way we're able to, to move forward. And so uh. That being said, we haven't really discussed this um, contract with the board. Um, they know that it's coming, they know it's in process. I think that at this point, the board is, of health is a little bit more focused on the site assignment. That's the task in front of them right now and it, it is a major task. Um, we're getting ready. We filed two weeks ago. Um, we've got a, a preliminary telephone conference with DEP tomorrow to discuss the. Administrative completeness section. So we're moving forward on that front as well. And, you know, when we get back in front of the board, I, I'll be back in front of the board shortly and, you know, we've kind of laid out. Things that we would like to discuss with them so that they're well aware of what's happening. As you guys know, we, we try not to. Have anyone get blindsided by what we're doing, so we want everybody to know. I know sometimes we get a little long-winded, but we'd rather have you guys know what's going on.
Thank you. MJ, do you have another question?
No, I was just gonna make a motion to authorize the town administrator to execute the successor ash and waste disposal. Agreement with re-world CMAS.
Okay, we have a second and I just want to add on to for the further discussions. We have a motion in a second. And uh, Dan, yeah, I just want to thank you as well for this. I am very familiar with this. As a matter of fact, my husband worked at CMAS for five years. And he was the guy on the loader that was pushing all the stuff into the hopper so that they could make all the puff in the ash that does this job. So I remember hearing about this work. It's pretty fascinating. How they, you know, how Covanta even works. So uh, thank you for all that. So we have a motion in a second. Do we, let me go around, we'll do roll call vote. Let me go around. We'll do roll call vote. Uh, Anne Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes. Unanimous, five, zero, zero. All right. Thank you for that.
Thank you very much. We have a great staff up here, so that's how we get it done. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Yep.
Okay. So next on our agenda is review draft of Police Station Roof Building Committee Charge.
So, Madam Chair, there's, um, a proposed charge for the building committee, uh, in the board's packet that I drafted up after town meeting. There was one, um, instance where library was identified. I have since corrected that. So just strike that in the version you're looking at in your packet, but this is the first, um, draft for your consideration for the next building committee.
Right. All right, so this is our first draft. Is anyone, oh, you guys look, oh, MJ, your hand is up. I'm not sure if it was up or if it's an old hand or a new one.
No, it's a, it's a new one. I actually think there's two places where the library building committee was listed in the first paragraph and then in another one later, so.
Okay.
I'll take, yeah.
I'll take a look. Thank you.
I think there were, there were two places, but this is basically the same committee charge that we used for the library committee that we had significant discussion about, so I'm fine with this. I still have my same comments about the hundred percent commissioning, but, um, yeah, I'm, would be fine with this. Um, I'd make a motion to accept this charge as amended, removing the library references to library.
Second.
Motion from MJ, a second from Anne Marie. Um, I'll go to go around, do roll call vote. Uh, Anne Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes. Five, zero, zero. All right. So next, we have to discuss and vote to select a representative from the select board to be appointed to the Library Building Committee.
I nominate Anne Marie Saruni, and as I represented to the Library Committee, Building Committee.
Well, second.
All right, so, um, we have.
I'll accept the nomination.
Okay, so we have a nomination from, uh, Mr. Meyer, second from, uh, Mrs. Strandalo, Mrs. Strandalo, and Anne Marie Saruni, and has accepted the nomination. So do we need a, uh, let me do roll call on that, I would think. Uh, Anne Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes. Five, zero, zero. It's unanimous. Welcome to the Library Committee. I love it. All right, so next, number ten, moving on, uh, is our consent agenda. Uh, we have a donation to the Council on Aging, seventy-eight dollars. We have a donation to the library totaling two eighty. We have a one-day beer and wine license issued to Ernest Boucher of Saint Margaret's Church, Fourteenth Main Street, Buzzes Bay, for Saint Margaret's Feast Day Dinner on November fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. D, we have homeless for the holidays and event everyone loves. Use of Town Roads to collect monetary donations for the annual turkey drive on November eighth and ninth, twenty twenty-five. Use of Town Roads to collect monetary donations for the annual toy drive on December sixth and seventh, twenty twenty-five. And use of the Community Building Gym to consort, bag, and pick up donations December seventh through December ninth. And I'm going to, I gotta go back up because I only have one page printed, just to make sure there's nothing else there. Sorry. The packet is known. And use of Town Roads for Cape Cod Roadrunners Annual Winter Fun Run on January fourth, twenty twenty-six with a snow date of one eleven twenty-six. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So move.
All right, Peter motions.
Second.
Second from Jean. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Uh, roll call vote. Uh, Anne Marie?
Yes.
Uh, Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Melissa, chair vote, yes. Five, zero, zero. All right. Next on the agenda is the, this scared me. That was weird. Okay, did you see that? Um, next on our agenda is the Town Administrator's Report.
Thank you. Um, just a couple of items today. I swim has diverted nineteen point zero nine tons of food waste from the landfill so far in twenty twenty-five. The Zoning Board of Appeals will be opening the public hearing for the Deer Path Village Forty-B tomorrow, November fifth at seven P M. The meeting is remote on Zoom and the login information is on the town website. This is a, this is the proposed three hundred unit development off of Scenic Highway. Um, the town has been awarded approximately eighty thousand dollars in digital equity grant funds to construct the outdoor Wi-Fi network for, um, the recreation area behind the community building. Barnstable County I T will be working with us over the next few months to build out those improvements. And finally, there has been a major modification filed with the Cape Cod Commission for the property at three forty MacArthur Boulevard. The proposal would modify a D R I that was issued in twenty twenty, excuse me, in two thousand and three. And a copy of the application for the modification is on file at the Town Clerk's Office. That is it for me tonight.
Thank you, Marlene.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Um, can I ask the town administrator one question? And I know it's not in her report, but there's really no other place on here I can ask it. And that's the Polar Express. I know last year we did a license agreement with them, and they're getting ready to ramp up. Are we, was that a one-year license or do they need to come back in again?
That will be on a future agenda for the board's discussion.
All right, that, that's all I need to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, so we have meeting minutes from nine thirty twenty twenty-five, ten seven twenty twenty-five, and ten twenty twenty-five. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So move.
All right, uh, we have motion from select board member, um, actually Vice Chair Saruni, I'm sorry about that, and, uh, select board member Jean, second. Now, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Um, roll call vote. Anne Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes. Five. Two, there. Okay, um, do we have any committee reports this evening?
I would just like to let the board know that there were some, um, updates made to the South Side Fire Station. Um, that the Fire Station Committee, uh, was given a presentation and those documents have been loaded up to the website. So, take a look.
Thank you. All right, correspondence. Correspondence. Don't have my readers. Okay. A, Bourne Middle School Accelerated Repair Program Letter. B, Algonquin Gas Cape Cod Canal Pipeline Relocation Project. C, Algonquin Gas Open House on November thirteenth. D, Cape, D E I R, Algonquin Gas Open House Two. E, Algonquin Gas Information for Citizens and Butters. F, Courtyard Request to Rescind Prior Support of Gotama Fish A B C C License. G, Goldstone Regarding Watershed Permits. H, Kaufman Regarding House Bill Four Zero Eight Two Title Five. I, McKinnis, Talent Bank for Recycling Committee. J, N E C S E M A Letter Regarding Nucle teen Products. K, Upper Take Meeting, Upper Cape, Cape, Upper Cape Tech Meeting Minutes for, um, zero nine ten two thousand twenty-five, and L, Zoning Waiver Application for Heather Hill and Deer Path Roads. And that's it. Okay, thank you. Um, so future agenda items related to correspondence and other items for future discussion. Peter did mention the Polar Express. That'll be coming later. Anything else? Hearing none. Our next dates are November eighteenth, um, December second, and the sixteenth. I will add, November eighteenth, I will be in Seattle. I should be able to log in that evening, um, from my hotel room, I hope. And then December second, I will be here, but it is my granddaughter's concert, but, um, I, I'll have to just, we'll have to make that work if there's not, there's not a lot of dates in December with the holidays and everything. So I just wanted to make a note of that. And, um, anyone else on those dates have any issues or thoughts on those dates presented? Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
We'll move.
Second.
We have a motion from Peter to adjourn, second from Anne Marie. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Uh, Anne Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes.
State travels, everybody that's out and about.
Thank you. Have a good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you. Bye.